And I'm warning you guys, I have a class. Get help.
I got a cough too. Fixed up in November, but the doctors will take forever for coming. Well, it used to be, at my age, you'd be old man and it was dead.
Are there a little sick? My kid, my kid.
George Washington State.
Yeah. Actually, it wasn't that long, it was the 50s they invented Panadol? I mean, far as being healthy is a pretty relatively new idea. I had the mumps or the measles twice when I was a kid, now they say they're eradicated.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We'd like to welcome you to Cedar Willy City Council meeting, please rise for our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for the record, all council members and staffs here, and we will go to the consent calendar, and as before, if there's something that you'd like to have discussed further, let me know and we'll pull it, if not, I'll entertain a motion from A to I.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar from A to I.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion by Councilman Galbraith, second by Councilperson Carnegie to approve the consent calendar A through I. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Pass. unanimous. Okay, we are going to public comment, and this is something that you would speak about that's not on the agenda, state your name and address for the record, limit your time to three to five minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Jeanie McLennan, and we are here representing Cedar Willy Lager Rodeo, and we would like to present the city of Cedar Willy with our $3,000 donation check to take care of the flower boxes for the city over the 4th of July.
Cool. Good call.
Thank you.
Great job. That's awesome.
Just put it in your pocket.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we will close the public hearing, and we will go to, or probably comment time, we'll go to New Business Item 5, this is recreational marijuana producers and processors, this will be Aaron. For John.
Good evening. So this has been an ongoing issue that the council has been discussing as legislation around the recreational marijuana laws have evolved. Where we're at now is the city council asked the planning commission to review whether or not the zoning code needed to be changed to address marijuana producers and processors, and where they might be located in the city of Cedar Willy, if at all. For a little bit of backdrop, this would be within the constraints of the state rules which say that any marijuana producers and processors and retail stores need to be within or outside of 1,000 feet from any schools, game arcades, child care facilities, and all of those rules are reviewed by the state, they're the ones that determine whether or not it's 1,000 feet from any of these sensitive areas, and they'll review that during the licensing process. So, aside from that issue, the city also has the opportunity to determine how to regulate marijuana producers, processors, and retailers in the city as far as where they're located, and any other mitigating factors that might be put in place to address these uses. So, the city council reviewed it and asked the planning commission to weigh in on it. The planning commission had a public hearing and made a recommendation that marijuana producers and processors be limited to the industrial zone in indoor spaces. The city council put a moratorium in place reflecting that decision until the city council can see the planning commission's findings, which are included in the memo, which is on page 173 of the packet, is the memo, which includes the planning commission findings. So based on what the planning commission found, staff put together a ordinance that would restrict producers and processors to the industrial zone, defines certain topics, certain words that are related to it, such as indoor. And in the ordinance, it limits, the way it's written is, it limits producers and processors to indoor spaces, which also exclude greenhouses, that's the way it's written. That ordinance is based on what the planning commission recommended and what the city council had told them to review. Since that time, a business that would like to locate a producer and processor facility in the city of Cedar Willy has been looking for a place in the city, and they have not been able to find a suitable piece of land for themselves in the city, based on these, if they were to follow these rules. So, their representative, who is Jennifer Ailer of Eldred and Associates, put together an alternative ordinance. That ordinance is also included in the memo in front of you today, as is a cover letter that explains their position and why they've recommended an alternative ordinance to what the planning commission has reviewed. So, what we're, what staff is asking today, normally this is a first read, so we don't like to ask for any action, however, if the city council wants to look further into the alternative ordinance, then let staff know so we can go over that ordinance, potentially hold another hearing, and just tighten it up for a final read next time. Otherwise, if the city council likes what the staff ordinance, then there would be no action necessary besides have a second read on it next time. This is entirely up to the city council what they wish to do. The representative, the business owner is here, and I'm sure would like to speak on behalf of her business at some point during this process. That's all staff has.
When we do get to that conversation about the alternative ordinance, I guess I'd just like to remind both the proponents as well as the council that this is a legislative recommendation, we're not talking about any particular sites, we don't want to discuss any particular individual sites tonight. You know, ultimately, depending on what the zoning is, there may be a permit processed in the future for a particular site, and that will go through the normal process. At this point, we're talking about entire zones within the city as opposed to specific parcels. Would you like to hear from Ms. Kincaid at this point?
Yes. Yes, please.
Hello, I'm Leah Kincaid. Jennifer Ailer was going to speak on our behalf, but wasn't able to make it due to a conflict of schedule, so I'm not completely great at speaking in public. You know, we are very heartfelt in wanting to bring this industry to the community. I know that there's people that have issue with it, I know that, you know, there's a lot of media around it, positive and negative. My partners and I are all business owners, we have a lot of investors behind us, business owners as well, this is something that we want to bring to, we will be bringing, you know, more than 200 living wage jobs to the community, we will be bringing, parts of the industry are actually taxed, so we will be bringing some tax revenue, there is talk about some of the state tax revenue coming to the cities in the future, so that's a possibility. I don't know what questions you would have for me, so any questions that you have for me, I'm happy to answer.
I have a couple. I remember you talked about a number of jobs, there was a projection early on, could you remind us what that number was?
We had 286 jobs projected at that time, so we're saying 200 plus, and we're saying that because at full operation, we don't truly know what that's going to look like because no one's ever done it before, but we know in the starting phase, we will need over 200 employees.
And under this proposed ordinance, if I was a neighbor to some property, what would it look like if I went out on the back porch with my cup of coffee in the morning and paint me a picture for how this is supposed to look, the way you envision it?
Our facility is required to have an eight-foot fence or wall around it that you cannot see through, so we will have, you know, an eight-foot barrier to start with. The facility itself, because plants are light sensitive, the facility itself would not have windows, would have, you know, tight security, we're required to have some of the tightest security in the state. If you were just looking at the facility, you'd pretty much see a fence. Outside of that, you know, we would of course landscape and give that barrier, we are more than willing to give, I read in the proposed ordinance that, I think they asked for a 25-foot barrier, or...
Buffer.
Buffer, thank you. We're very comfortable with that, that's not an issue at all. Part of, part of growing these plants is, bug infestation is one of our enemies, and plants actually help that, so landscaping everything is actually, you know, part of our business plan. So, our goal is to have the community happy that we're here. We don't want to, you know, we all have children ourselves, we all have families that are affected, our goal is not to have some, you know, shady business, this is very industrial, it's very, you know, eventually it will go from recreational, and they're pushing us towards it, it will eventually be medical, but at the pharmaceutical level, so this is very much, you know, just a business, not a, you know, a bunch of people putting a bunch of plants out in the yard and hoping for the best type of thing.
I have a couple of questions. Would you, I know you've said this before, but would you tell the rest of the people how large this facility is going to be, and also the projected cost of producing this facility or directing it?
We have applied for three 30,000 square foot licenses, so we'd have 90,000 square feet of grow space, and a facility to actually process and package that. It is going to cost us somewhere between 15 and 18 million dollars to put this facility together. So, it's a major investment on our part.
With that kind of money, you must have major, major investors behind you.
Yes. We have...
There's a rumor out there that says there are Microsoft people, of course, all of us think all Microsoft people are wealthy, but beyond that...
The state requires that our investors be certified investors unless we go through a whole nother process. So far, all of our, I'm sorry, accredited investors, so far, all of our investors are accredited, which means that all of them have made at least $600,000 in the last two years, and have at least a million dollars in assets outside of their home. So, you know, these are strong business people.
Kind of expel a little bit more on what Keith was asking, the building structure will be a large cement or cinder block building, or a pole-type building of some...
Our business plan now is a large cement building, of course, we'll try to make it as appealing and pretty on the outside as we can.
And then basically, an industrial building for the most part?
Yes.
Very secure, commercial building?
Very secure. But in addition to that, we will have light deprivation greenhouses, so those screen out, they open during the day and they screen during the night. The ones that we are getting are made in California? Sorry. They are the only ones on the market that can actually be insured, because they are a solid structure, they are a building in every way. There is no other greenhouse that can be insured, because most of them, you know, can break easily with wind or storm or snow load, and these ones, that's not the case with these.
The last question I'd like to have you comment on is, with your processing and producing, where will your major sales be? And I know that you're going to be trucking all over the state, or maybe even further?
Well, I mean, at this point, we have to stay within the state, so we will be transporting across the state. I have put a request into the state to allow us to have dispensaries pick up at our location. If they are able to do that, then the tax revenue stays in the city. But as part of our business plan as well, there's other things that we will be doing, you know, we're creating cookbooks, and we're selling products that enhance that to other growers, and, you know, there's products that we'll be selling where the tax revenue will stay here. Then also, our utility taxes will be huge, you know, our utility costs will be two or three million dollars a year, very easily.
Well, I wanted you to comment on, your people that are going to be purchasing are going to be doing it out of the area.
Correct. Yes, we won't be selling to residents or...
This is not a Cedar Willy enterprise where we're selling $10 million to whatever, you know, it's, we're all over King County, we're all over the large population basis.
Well, this is, if I remember, this will be the largest facility in North America, isn't that correct?
It will be the largest facility in Washington State, which I haven't heard of there's a larger one in Colorado, but so far, I haven't come across one, I think that we will be the largest.
And my last question would be, have you projected how long it would take from beginning to end to start your project and finish? Were you projecting like, what, how long? One year to get it off the ground? Up and going?
The state requires us to be at 50% capacity within 12 months.
Okay, one year.
How does this impact our sewer plant? How much will you be watering?
Can you help with that? Have him, he's working on that part of it.
My name's Michael Drexler, I'm a, I guess representative and consultant with Washington Source. I guess I want to thank the council for the time, anybody else who's come to give input or comment. Essentially, regarding your question with the wastewater, part of our business model also includes, we use nutrients that are organic and not hazardous to the environment, but they are costly, and there is runoff, and so for us, it makes more fiscal sense to catch or collect that runoff, and then reutilize it in the buffer space to grow things like ornamentals, food for the community, things of that nature. So, in speaking with the wastewater plant, they obviously showed some concerns with runoff, but with our model, essentially, what we're doing is putting in a huge sand filtration system and reusing all of that water that's perfectly good for growing crops to do exactly that. So, as far as our load on your facility, which I believe is at 45% capacity already, that's going to be extremely minimal.
And while you're at it, how about for, if you're air scrubbers?
Yes.
You know, I'm concerned with odors.
To be perfectly frank, I think most of the owner, or most of the odor that you'll get would be out of a processing facility, which we will be required to scrub the air, you know, have it go into a second chamber room where it's scrubbed and then released. My experience comes from the last five years working in the medical cannabis industry, and we got very, very good at cleaning up the air. Some people are pretty lazy about it, and it does, you know, produce an odor that's not pleasant to the community, not something I really think we're concerned about. I guess there is a, there will be times with the greenhouses open, when they open, that that very well could be an issue, but I would also make the point that when the corn farmers here throw their fertilizer all over, that is much more, much more pungent. I've grown up in Skagit County, you know, every spring and fall, we get it, but I think that the smell of cannabis is going to be much lighter than what you experience a couple times a year frequently in this area.
What about the other thing that I had a concern about, what about the noise level? You know, we always get, is there any noise from machinery or whatever you're doing that would be offensive to people who would be living in the perimeters?
It's really limited to motor controls and ventilation, I mean, really, as far as anything that's going to make noise. Gosh, you know, and with a 25-foot barrier and our eight-foot fence, not to mention whatever trees we'll probably be planting right on the backside of that fence, I really personally don't think that's going to be a huge issue, but that's certainly something we could look into, and see kind of what sort of zones we're putting out with that equipment.
I have a question, I was wondering about, maybe more for her.
Absolutely.
The living wage jobs, you said somewhere between, anywhere between 200 and 300, can you tell me a little bit more about what that would look like, I mean, as far as what you consider to be living wage jobs?
Our basic, just, you know, our lowest wage that we would ever pay would be $15 an hour. Our intention is to pay most, all of the staff over $45,000 a year, with full benefits for them and their family. We had intended to give them profit share, and the state has made that not allowed, so we are working through, trying to figure out a way to give bonuses, or, so I can't say that we can guarantee that, because the state's not allowing it right now, but that is our intention.
Thank you.
And to note on that again, when I first started working with Washington Source, one of my very first questions was, are you trying to keep hours low so that you can only have part-time employees, thus avoiding a lot of these things, and they very adamantly assure me that that is not the case. What they're going to do is provide real working, living wage jobs that are above the minimum wage.
Get down and writing.
I've had a lot of people tell me.
The fact is, we see this as an opportunity to really set an industry standard with how cannabis producers and retailers and processors integrate with their community. Personally, I have a really good reputation with the local authorities up in Waukesha County, because we always worked with them whenever we came up with an issue, rather than just doing something and asking for forgiveness there. It's kind of a unique position we all find ourselves in.
Yes.
Yeah, I see. Okay, George?
We haven't talked to the people yet, so, you know, it's kind of difficult, this is all, this is all very, very new, so, and we haven't, I haven't had a conversation with them about this project.
I can address that to some degree, we are required by the state, the security assistant that we are required to have is the same security system that is used by the missile silos by the government. It is face recognition, it is high-tech, it records at all times, every bit of our perimeter has to be covered, we are required to have full-time security on staff at all times. Our security is a major, major issue, and I don't think that, I can't even think of an industry near that would have anywhere near the security that we have for that facility.
You get a whole show, great prices?
Show us that retail license.
And possible revenue to the city could be used to that shortfall of the police, isn't that the reason?
And we are required to maintain our own security staff. We're required to maintain our own security staff as well, and so really, you're talking about the security of product leaving and coming to the facility, which is in transport vehicles, the lady and I, no, they're not federally allowed to be.
Yeah, they're not allowed to carry guns, they can have other weapons, but no guns, right? Yes. We've actually discussed that, you know, I asked the state what weapons we're allowed to have, they said, you know, mace or tasers, I said, what about ninja swords? They said yes.
Any more questions?
I kind of have a question after the guard thing, I was wondering, like, who, who okay's, you know, the security? Do you guys, you guys are doing, you guys do the hiring of the security? And then who maintains their background checks and all of that?
We hire them, but the liquor control board actually has to clear them, so they have to meet the state requirements of the liquor control board.
We just hired...
The person that we've hired to train our staff is actually, it sounds a little James Bond, but he used to work for the government, he used to teach mixed martial arts for black ops, he's certified to teach anything, start to finish. Yeah.
Drug tester employee?
We'll have to see. It's hard to get good gardeners if you...
Leah, is, is it true that at this point, if we don't go forward with some alternate ordinance, you're out of choices? Have you explored everything in the allowed areas already?
I have. If we can't make the changes that we are discussing, then we would need to go to the county. The county is not our preference, you know, the city of Cedar Willy has been very welcoming, you know, the community as a whole has been very supportive of us, and we would like to be supportive in return, you know, it's important to me to be part of the city, but if that didn't work, then we would go to the county.
And then we don't, we're seeing many sort of benefits from either jobs, I guess jobs that could drive that.
You know, some of the jobs, but the utility taxes and the taxes from other sales, and if the state actually ends up giving the city part of the tax, all of that would go to the county.
So when you guys are in Olympia, you guys can bring that up with all this thing.
Well, it's like, the council is interested in looking at this particular alternative as part of the second reading, I think we would suggest that you have a public hearing because it's a deviation from the planning commission's recommendations. Now technically, the planning commission's already had the public hearing, so I don't think it's necessary, but just to be comfortable to allow anybody in the community who'd like to comment formally, you know, a second public hearing at the next meeting would precede any potential action. Any questions about the proposal in particular tonight?
I guess Cedar Willy, when they, I mean, all precincts of Cedar Willy voted and approved the recreational use of marijuana, there are strict rules on where it can be, I don't see why, as a city who, you know, needs and wants business, to be a business-friendly community, in zones where it's undeveloped, you know, in zone of, you know, substantial sizes shouldn't be developed, you know, to bring business to the city, so...
And to make sure people understand that when we vote on this, we're not voting to have it or not to have it, really, it's coming, and it's either going to be in our city, or it's going to be a half a mile from Tony's house in the county. Doesn't make, doesn't make any difference, I shouldn't have probably said that, but it was kind of fun anyway, but the, but the, my point is, is that we're voting on placement. That's what we're voting on, so, you know. Or the city, that's our choice.
Exactly.
And, you know, we've missed, you know, Keith and I were talking about that earlier, we've missed some opportunities.
One after another, for decades.
Uh-huh. You know, I'd like to get two or three more policemen, and so would everybody on this council, for a lot of reasons.
So what I'm hearing is somebody to make a motion that we maybe have a public hearing at the next meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the alternate ordinance.
Well, not adopt the alternate ordinance, but set a public hearing to consider the alternate ordinance.
Very well, as spoken. I move that we have a public hearing to consider the alternate ordinance, and that would constitute a second reading.
That would be a second reading as well.
Second? Second? Okay, we got a motion by Councilman Wagner, second by Councilman Sandstrom, to have a public hearing at our next council meeting to consider the alternative ordinance, which would be a second reading. Any further discussion? Yeah, I've just wanted to make my comment. The project itself, I'm not against, but I'm against the R5 zoning, and I'm a believer that we need to follow the rules. And I would suggest, I'm not against it, but it needs to be rezoned industrial, what we're doing. Because I'm against putting it where it's zoned residential. To me, it's like the good old boy system, which Cedar Woolley's famous for, just like their letter says in here, if I put my glasses on. The ability for more processing production facilities to locate in R5 zone would not be allowed unless the state's, I mean, it needs to be industrial area. That's where we've been headed, and I'm dead set against R5, but wherever it is, rezone it to industrial.
Well, that may be something we have to do in due time. However, as you well know, zoning changes are like molasses, and it takes a long time. We have a business environment here where the state's changing the rules very rapidly, and it would have been great if we could have got ahead and led that a little bit. Perhaps it will be rezoned at a later date, but that's not something you can do quickly.
If you don't mind me saying, just so that you know the timeline that we have, the state has given us till March 7th to have our location. So, by March 7th, we have to submit our purchase and sale and are okay to go into that location. So, it is not a very long timeline. They originally said we would have eight months. They've changed that to 30 days. They gave us 60 days because we're such a large facility, but there is no extending that deadline.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I want to talk a little bit more about this. I don't want to lose these jobs, and I don't like pot, I don't use pot, I don't want my kids to use pot. I've been against it from the beginning. But it's here, like Hugh said, and we're going to get the bad that comes with it no matter what. So, we need to try and get the good that we can get from this. Since I moved back here, I haven't been here very many years, five years, I've had two neighbors lose their home. I have a third neighbor getting ready to lose their home, and it's all because they don't have jobs. So, if this was projected to bring in 10 jobs, I'd be thrilled. If you're off by 100%, I'm going to be ecstatic to get those jobs for people. The other end of that is, and George asked the question of the chief, is about how it's going to affect the police. Well, right now, we've been in the uncomfortable position of balancing not raising taxes on our citizens and trying to provide services. And we know that we have shortchanged our law enforcement and our fire guys and our staff. This is a chance to get something back that we can maybe replenish our coffers and do some good with. That's how I feel about it. I think we keep thinking SeaWorld's going to come here and build a water resort. It's not going to happen. We've got to take who does come, and I guess I'd have my say. Thanks.
You know, if, go ahead.
This two-week delay, does that really put a hindrance on where you guys are projected in going? Or do we have that leeway?
We do have other options we're exploring. Essentially, with this type of facility, with the funds invested, with all the people involved, every day at this point makes a difference. So, just, I mean, obviously, the council has to, you know, be prudent, take the time you need, but understanding that we aren't very aggressive.
The 14 days hurts, but it's not, it's not a deal killer.
Exactly.
And we have the potential to approve it our next, in that, our next, our second meeting of February?
Well, following a public hearing and consideration of any testimony that might be given, then the council would be able to adopt an ordinance at that point. And this ordinance, incidentally, you know, the reason this is an option at this point is because the planning commission has gone through the process following the council's request in moratorium, and the question that's been posed is, in which zones should we allow these three marijuana uses? And that's why the door is open to consider in which zones you want to allow it. Certainly, if you wanted to stick to the single-zone course that the planning commission recommends, that would be an option, and it would be an option to potentially change in our 5-zone parcel sometime in 2015.
Can I ask, Rick, you're the only planning commissioner here. Was the alternate?
That was not presented at the planning commission.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right. So, timeline-wise, you know, the planning commission completed their work late last year. There was no discussion at the planning commission, really, of anything other than what was presented by the planning commission to the council.
Usually, Tony, if there's a motion on the table in a second, we won't have public comment, but I'm going to be special.
You're special.
Go for it.
Okay, Tony explains 714 Sap Road, Cedar Woolley. As in the past, I've been against this to begin with, but as a side, I checked with nine different companies in Skagit County with high-paying jobs. If you test positive for marijuana use, you are terminated on the spot. And in the case of the trucking companies, you lose your CDL. So, that means you can't go back to work in that industry again. But this might be a question for the mayor or Aaron. Let's say one of our garbage truck drivers tested positive on a Monday morning for marijuana. What would happen?
He would lose his CDL in this job, most likely.
All right. So, why do we encourage this?
Well, the same would be true if he came to work drunk. But we're supportive of the alcohol industry. It's because it's now become legal.
Well, yeah, but he can take a day off, and his alcohol is gone. Marijuana stays with you for, I've heard, for up to three weeks, or test positive after using it. That's what I've heard. I don't know if that's fact or not.
You know, for the city employees, recreational marijuana use would continue to be prohibited under our current policies.
But, I don't know, I'd still like to see none of this in the city limits of Cedar Woolley. Put it out in the county someplace, or on top of Wickersham Hill. That's a good place for it.
Okay. Okay. We got a motion and a second. Holes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, holes? Okay, six to one. Low in the negative. Okay, we will go to legislative agenda, and this will be Aaron.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have on your days a handout that has our tentative schedule since we last met. I think we've got meetings with seven elected officials. It's actually seven out of the eight that I was seeking. I have not heard back from Senator Bailey's office, but as you can see, we've got everybody in the 39th, and we've got a couple people in the 40th and a couple people in the 10th. So, you know, pretty good collection of elected folks. The question for you tonight is really the legislative agenda. If you look, starting at page three, there are three items that I've got in there. The first one is a perennial topic for the city of Cedar Woolley, and that's felony jail medical costs. This is an issue that hasn't changed. I'll probably update the fourth paragraph to add some more recent costs that we've experienced. But, you know, we're still, we're still upset about the 2009 change that switched the responsibility for medical costs for, for a pre-sentence felons from the counties to the cities. And we continue to try to look for solutions. So, we've broadened our request for solutions a little bit, our ideas. So, that's on our list, has been in the past. On the recreational marijuana front, it's a pretty short one. The state's got a 75% excise tax with 0% that goes to cities and counties. We'd like them to revise that and spread some of the peanut butter to the communities that'll have to clean it up. And specifically, I would, I would probably allocate it directly to law enforcement, just as they do with some of the alcohol profit sharing. So, put that bug in their ear. And then, the last item I'd put together is just the Northern State Hospital, continued request. You'll see there's a gap in the background there. I'm waiting for the port to kind of put together some additional information on the grant that they're currently chasing, as well as the capital budget request, that's done pursuant to our partnership through that interlocal from the last meeting. You probably read in the newspaper that the county government adopted that interlocal the Monday following your adoption. So, it all happened in exactly the timeframe that we were hoping to see it happen in. We'll be meeting tomorrow, the project partners, to discuss some of the next steps, but one of those will clearly be some legislative advocacy. So, there'll be more detail there. And the question for you tonight is, do you like those three? Do you want others? What, what sort of water do you want to carry in Olympia this year?
Well, if somebody thinks so before the trip.
Let me know. Yeah, I'll have to get it, you know, it's nice to have a briefing paper, so we've got something to hand out, and then figure out which council members would like to talk about which issues. That's kind of fun, and...
Is there a list of the seminars that are optional at this conference?
I don't have the, yeah, there is. There's a conference schedule's online, and I could get a copy for you at my desk. We'll be...
Could you email me one?
Yeah. Yeah, I think I can link that over to...
I mean, there's plenty of interesting ones to go to, but...
We'll get all of the Wednesday conferencing we'd be able to hit, which is basically from 11:00 AM until we zip up to meet with Representatives Morris and Litten. That's a tentative meeting. I like 5:30, but they're telling me they might prefer to meet a little earlier in the afternoon, so that might cost us a little bit of the conference activity. The main event would be the governor's presentation and lunch. That happens right at the top of the day. Then on Thursday, there are a couple morning activities. In fact, you can see them from 7:30 to 10:30. We're going to have to bail out early to get to Representative Scott's office for a 9 o'clock meeting. So, I've always scheduled these with the idea that meeting with legislators takes priority if we have to bug out of the conference. But yeah, I'll send you the current conference schedule.
And then...
We'll also be, by the way, not staying at the conference hotel because we're a little late to the game. So, we're going to be at the, what do they call it here?
Ramada.
It's not the Ramada anymore. It's called the Governor Hotel. It's been freshly painted.
But that is downtown.
I got a question. I may have missed it in the past months, but did we ever pay that bill on that jail guy?
Which one?
The $25,000 one, or whatever it was.
No.
We still haven't paid that.
No, we don't feel that we owe that bill.
Are they charging interest?
No.
Oh, interest-free, that's okay.
Well, we don't feel that it's our bill. Don't think it's our responsibility. So, any other items that the council, any of the council members wanted on the agenda?
Well, I, when we talk with Jeff Morris, I'd like to talk to him about, he had told me one time that he, you know, he was on the development committee, and I think he still is. Anyhow, that he knew all these people that would come in and put industrial areas in. And I want to bring that subject up, and he said, even though the, that's back when they redistricted, so God, I guess, that was 10, 12 years ago. I want to remind him of it and see if he's still interested in helping Cedar Woolley, which he said he would then. You know, because he said he knew people, his position, all these people that would come in and put in whole industrial parks in. So, I want him to tell us to line us up with those people.
Well, make sure there's some time we can, he can bring...
I want to remind him of what he said.
Yeah.
We still have time if we suddenly get an epiphany in the middle of the night to...
Yeah, well, and he can bring up anything you want. And really, the question for you tonight is whether there are any particular issues that the city, you know, as a whole, wants to highlight. You know, certainly, when we're there and visiting, there may be a number of issues that come up. And the one thing I don't have on the list that I, I wish I had is some sort of capital budget request for us, but we're just not, we're just, we don't have one this year. But it's always fun to ask for one.
Let's start with Chief Wood.
Well, today, we, thanks to the city crew, we, last week, I reported to our last councilman that we seized a mobile home over in Curtis Street. Anyway, it was, it'll be in the paper today. The paper showed up and showed a picture of the excavator crunching up the drug house in a residential area and putting it in a dumpster and hauling it off. So, you know, it's just an ongoing battle that we continue to do is, you know, go after the, you know, drug traffickers to try to combat the, you know, some of the other crimes that are associated with, you know, street-level drug dealing. And that's all.
Chief Klinger.
We had a lengthy phone conversation with the Washington State Survey and Rating Bureau today. They assure us that by probably end of next week, they'll have a preliminary decision, and we should get our final grading the week after. So, we'll, should know by then whether your insurance rates will go up, down, or stay the same.
You must be sweating there. John?
So, at the next work session, it's actually a joint Planning Commission-City Council work session. So, Planning Commission's, Planning Department's going to be presenting information about the 2014 comprehensive plan docket, what's, what's been requested from the public, what the council would like to do, what, see, worked on during this period. So, the Planning Commission members will be there, and we'll also be talking about how that fits into the 2016 county update. By June of 2016, the county and the city have to have all of their comp plan updated, which was last done in 2005. So, the city's been working on various elements of the comp plan every year for the past several years, so we just have a few left. So, we'll talk to the city council and see if our phasing plan is, works for the city council. And then, there'll also be some policy discussion about whether or not our urban growth area will need to be changed based on what the county figures are for population growth over the next 20 years. So, this will be the time when the county is looking at changing urban growth areas based on new population projections. So, there's some pretty good policy information that'll be happening over the next couple of years, and this'll be just the city council's first discussion of it, so you'll know what's coming down the pike over the next couple of years. It can get contentious between the various cities, you know, allotting population and also employment figures, so which towns are going to be allotted more jobs, basically. And we'll discuss how that all works at the work session on the 5th. That's all we've got.
Mark?
Just briefly, in my report, I've given you some information on a number of things, including the TAP funding that we've ranked number two and number three in the urban ranking for, for the SR20 Cook Road sidewalk project. Last time, I thought we had a pretty good application. It turned out that the committee agreed with that, so that funding will, should be available to us. Their, the next step in the process is for the Skagit and Island members to get together and mesh the two lists from those because they do rank the projects all between both jurisdictions. We expect that'll be completed by early March. We'll be able to move forward. The TAP funding, as I found out today from local programs, DOT local programs, may create some issues with my original plan to add that by change order to the existing contract. It's always strings. Their preliminary indication to me was, is they thought we'd have to bid it separately. That would put the timing a little difficult to make it happen with the construction that we've got scheduled for the end of April there, but I'll report on that later as we continue to work on that particular issue. The other project that was ranked highly was the SR20 shared-use path, the south side of SR20 from Ferry to Rhodes Road. We did rank pretty well on that, and just my preliminary look at the funds that are available, that should be also funded with this round. So, we would look at starting the design process on that sometime in the fall of this year, on getting that... design process on that sometime in the fall of this year, getting that ready for a TIB application to come up with the rest of the funds for that. The TIB sidewalk program is, will be called in August of this year. In addition to that, we've been looking at the Fruitdale Road slide area, as you know, and we've been trying to come up with a low-cost way of doing some repairs on that. David met with our crew up there today, and we haven't been up there for a month or two, and unfortunately, that slide area is expanding. It looks like there's 300 or 400 feet of road involved in it now. We're going to take Aaron and the mayor up there after we get it cleaned up and we can look at it a little better. It may not be possible for us to repair that without a major infusion of funds, which we don't have, so that just may prove unfeasible for us, but we'll report again on that after our next meeting. There are a couple of calls for additional grant funding, the Safe Routes to Schools Program, which we used for the two projects we did last summer on Highway 9. That call is due on May 5th. We'll apply for John Leiner Road for a shared use path on the north side of that between Reed Street and Highway 9. Also, there's a call for the FIMCEB, the Freight Mobility Strategic Investment Board. Might be a possibility for our Jones to John Leiner Railroad Undercrossing. We're going to look at that closely as well. And as I reported last time, and you gave permission to submit, we did submit applications for the Jamison SR-9 arterial extension project and for the Jones to John Leiner Railroad Undercrossing for federal funds through the council of governments. Those will be ranked next month and go forward to the board. Similar process to what I described for the TAP project. We applied for design phase funding for both projects. They coincidentally turned out to be nearly the same sized asks. It was about a $600 ask with a $93,000 local match requirement for the bridge undercrossing and then for the railroad undercrossing, and a $620,000 ask for the, and $95,000 match for the Jamison arterial project. And we haven't identified where we've come up with those local funds yet. We've pretty well used up our stable of funds, but we'll get it in the pipeline anyway in the queue and start looking for additional sources. That's pretty much all I had to report on this evening. Thank you. I haven't heard of any.
Aaron?
Put on your days there menu. If you would please put your name at the top of it and circle what you want to have for lunch at the council retreat and give that back to me tonight. We'll make sure to have that there. I had intended to go to Neopolis, but I understand that they're closing, and so that may be their final day in business here in Cedar Woolley, so it didn't seem like a great day to try to put together a complicated order. We're working on the agenda. We'll get that out to you shortly, but we're looking at next Friday, so it's a week from this Friday, from 9:30 to 1:30, and we'll do it here in this building upstairs in room 202. So it should be convenient for everyone, and we'll have lunch.
What time did you say?
9:30 to 1:30. And other than that, we're continuing to work on our police department radio infrastructure, still sorting out some questions, and Chief's been working with the neighboring chiefs to make sure that the patch will work and all of that, so we haven't actually spent any dollars or anything of that nature yet. We're still waiting to hear back from our cell phone, cell tower provider with the terms of our free use, and we haven't heard back yet. So that's all I've got.
Betsy?
Since our last meeting, we've completed our first payroll and the new accounting system, as well as our first payables, and things are looking quite good. With the approval of the final 2013 payables this evening by the council, we'll be able to start completing last year and moving on to 2014.
I guess I got a chance to watch the house being torn up, and it's kind of an interesting thing emotionally, you know, when it's great to be hard and crying, but, you know, that was a whole woman's life was in there, all her clothes. I mean, it's just kind of an incredible sight to see it get crunched up, so that was kind of neat.
Detective Dewar did go back and retrieve any items that the residents wanted out of there, so they went and she retrieved, you know, the personal effects and things that she wanted. So, and it was, you know, like you say, it was, you know, it's bittersweet, but there wasn't much other than the personal effects that inside there.
Yeah, and then secondly, I just want to thank, Rick, you're here, so I'll thank you as a, you'll be the liaison, but I want to thank the Planning Commission for the hard work that they do, you know, taking on, you know, always our tough, hard work you do for us, so thank you.
Well, and Rick's done on the Planning Commission.
Oh, is he?
Rick just wrapped up.
All right.
And Chuck, Chuck just came to the party.
No, I didn't.
How many yeses did you say?
I guess I did.
Goes by quick, all right. Rick? Walking downtown, someone that walks around, kind of was a little dismayed. I don't know who did some repair work in front of Inspire Church with the sidewalk, where they just put asphalt and Lewis cement. They did some construction out into the street, but they covered the sidewalk with asphalt, and they ran over it with some vehicles, so it's all ridgy and up and down, and they were kind of saying how it was a pretty poor repair job in that section of sidewalk, about this wide, that they filled with asphalt instead of cement, and it's, looks kind of tacky and was kind of giving you this little unequal walking ability in that little section, was wondering.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that, but I'll check on it and report back.
Was that on township or state?
Bear it from somebody or what?
Which side of the church?
Along Township Street?
On the township side.
Yeah, it's kind of right across, ah, right across from Hillsview parking lot area, but there's a big black spot of asphalt in the sidewalk.
We do have utility work going on pretty much all the time in town. Sometimes they take out panels and temporarily patch them.
Yeah, maybe it's a temporary patch there or something.
I'll find out.
Just FYI. And go Seahawks. You?
Nothing.
Keith?
Yeah, I know Mark's not one to toot his own horn over there, but I think he just told us in a humble and matter-of-fact way that he and his staff got us $450,000 in money that we badly needed. That stuff doesn't just fall into our hand because you ask. That's a result of a lot of hard work and getting our requests in just right, and we all really appreciate it, because I know we weren't getting that money before you came, and we have been now, so thanks for all the hard work you and the staff do on that.
I think that this Saturday, the Cedar Woolley Boys and Girls Club is having a fundraiser. It was kind of a last-minute deal. The city let everybody know it's like $10. I think it starts at 5:30, and I don't have any other information other than that. You can contact them.
Community Center, yeah?
At the community center. Thanks.
Kevin?
Nothing.
We also have Denny Ingberg at Memorial at the same time. It's hard to be in both places. I have one thing that I just want to get some feedback from you guys on hiring people, relatives of the city. We sort of have kind of a, I don't know, official or unofficial policy of nepotism? And- I think that's official.
We have a policy that was written in, I don't know, maybe 1982, that prohibits hiring-related employees, but that hasn't been the practice that the city's followed in that time period. In the last, in the last, I would say, five, six-ish years, the test we've utilized is a supervisory-type relationship, so, you know, if they're not going to be in a department or there's any oversight, there's no supervisory responsibility, then that's been okay. If there is supervisory responsibility, then it's not, but that's not exactly what the policy says.
Yeah, but, you know, my feeling is, I've always kind of, I don't like, I like it where we don't have relatives all working here. Correct. And it's, you know, affects me personally, my son, he's with the fire department, he can't work days because of it, and I just, I've seen where other governments, agencies have filled up with relatives, and so I've always kind of wanted Woolley to not be that way, you know, because there's no doubt, when you work for the city, you hear about a job opening or something that no one else has access to, and so I kind of like it where we try not to hire someone unless it's just a temporary or, you know, I don't know how we, I know in the past, there's been a few times where I didn't, you know, a couple mayors ago, hired someone, and I didn't like it because I, so that's just, I'm getting your feeling from you guys.
That sounds right, but it's a really small town, so sometimes it's hard not to be, I'm thinking about how I'm related by that three degrees of separation.
You're right, you're right.
I'm related to a whole lot of people. Am I ruining their chances for work?
Yeah.
And if I'm the best qualified and I have a background to prove it, we're going to say no.
I mean, a lot of places I go, there are jokes, you can't work for Cedar Woolley unless you're related to the half that's related to the other half.
Well, they say that about Burlington, too, so.
Say it about the county. Especially in a small city-
Every city you live in, Kevin.
Especially in a small city like this. I mean, the way the world works, you can say they're more qualified, but it doesn't mean they really are. Well, I'm just getting your feedback, because, you know, I've seen it, I used to work for the phone company.
Who you want to hire, Christine?
No, I'm not firing anyone, no, no. But I'm just saying, no, I'm not saying, I'm not identifying anyone, I'm just saying, do we want to open it up where we do have, you know, that?
Well, surely if we have a policy, we should be sticking to our policy, or if we're not sticking to our policy, we should change it to what we want.
Well, and that's the question for you. I mean, it's obvious that the city has not followed its policy since it was implemented, you know? Can't help but to pick on Nathan here, but his mom does work for the city of Cedar Woolley and worked for us before Nathan did, and he's not the only one. I mean, there are a number of examples where we've got, you know, spouses who work for the city or have worked or whatever it may be. So, you know, we have, I would say the practice pre, you know, Mike being mayor, it didn't appear to me that it's been followed exactly strictly. Since then, we've at least followed that supervisory test, but neither of those are what the policy actually says. Policy says none.
And we should fix it.
You know, you have that whole issue of kind of what's the practice, what's the policy, and then the question is, well, what do you want to do? And that's all the mayor's asking tonight, is we've got, you know, some part-time job postings, and the questions come up, well, could I apply? And I'll give you, there, we have told employees, no. We had an opening not too long ago where we had a potential candidate was interested in applying, and I had to call the candidate and say, I'm sorry, you're too closely related to the person who would be supervising you. I don't think you, we can't take your application. So it's not that we don't have, in current practice, a nepotism policy in use, it's that what we're doing today is different than what the policy is, and that may be different from what you want us to do.
So maybe at the workshop, they can discuss it more if they want to think about it.
Sure, think about it, and ask around, see what you think might make sense.
Okay, no. Of course. Okay, anything else? I need a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Okay, second. All right, thank you. Spend more time here now than you have in the past.